For approval, action item one A is the approval of minutes on the March twenty eighth, twenty twenty four meeting. I'd like to move the approval of action item one A. May I have a second? Any discussion on the minutes? Let's move to a vote. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed or abstentions?
Abstention, I wasn't here.
Okay.
She doesn't vote, you don't vote?
Oh, okay, well, that helps.
But thank you for that.
My apologies.
We appreciate the intention.
Yes, sorry about that.
That item's approved. With no other action items on the agenda, we'll move on to the information item. Vice Chancellor Sarmiento will provide a fall twenty twenty four enrollment report at today's meeting. Then we'll devote the rest of the meeting to reviewing three pipeline strategies for the upcoming academic year. Hi, how are you?
Good. I survived the fall and the start of the classes, so.
And you didn't expect it?
You never know.
And FAFSA, it was, yeah, it was a touch and go for a while, but happy to be here. Happy to be here. Um, let's see. Okay, so I'm gonna go over the fall report, enrollment report. The dust is still settling into the narrative of how we got to where we are. I would suspect that in October, we're gonna really get into the data. We have our colleagues here in Orida, and they said they just need a little bit more time to be able to dissect some of the things that I'm gonna go over today, because you're gonna say, wow, what caused that? So just wanna be able to preface that. We're also.
Are we smiling or frowning when we ask what caused that?
Yeah, no, we're smiling, we're smiling. We're gonna talk about the recent board resolution that allowed us to partner with non-NYCPS colleges. We are really fortunate to have President Anderson here, because they took advantage of the board resolution and started their first class this fall. We're also gonna go over CUNY FAST, which really debriefs about the work that we've done with the FAFSA, and then also a little bit with RECONNECT as well. And we're fortunate to have Richard Finger, Vice President Richard Finger from Lehman College, to be able to talk about what's happening at the campuses. We got to over thirty thousand students over the course of the program, and I must say that a lot of the work and the participation and success has been with the campuses. So, we start off on a good note with summer, that's three point three percent increase. So a majority of it, as you could see, is on the undergrad side. For fall, there were increases in all three categories: new students, the freshmen, the transfer, and the graduate students. So that's all good.
Before you leave, are transfer students transfers within CUNY or from outside of CUNY, or both?
They're both, and next month, we'll go over the distribution of where they came. Did they come from a senior to senior CUNY? Those are some of the questions. Yeah, so we'll have more information on that, on that transfer number, as well as new students. Enrollment by sector, you could see the increases in headcount for the community colleges. That's where a majority of the increases have been. But you could also see that there are increases in FTE as well. Okay, so as of the nineteenth, we're just a little under three percent overall. The freshman numbers are a little, they're one percent below. But you could also see which is a pretty high, the transfer number at nine point two. And graduate, new student enrollment shot up in the last month to level out at four point one percent. So that is really good news in graduate student enrollment. Any questions about enrollment? Just kind of, it's pretty basic in terms of overall enrollment. So this is the pipeline, the dual, the dual credit for non-NYCPS schools. So, oh, and we have, we have Richard, you're also. The campus partnerships are with Brooklyn, CSI, and Lehman. And there are also other colleges who are interested. They all have contacts with Catholics and yeshivas, and so right now, we're just trying to formalize it and then scale it for more spring, more, more colleges in the spring, but definitely all the rest of them, probably this, this next fall. So this is pretty promising in terms of establishing College Now. The, the thing that we also need to be able to do in addition to that is really to build up the opportunities for these students to transfer, take their college credits, and then come to CUNY. Okay. So now I wanna turn it over to Laura, you wanna take this?
Sure, happy to. My name is Laura Myers, nice to meet everyone. I'm the Assistant Dean of K-16 Initiatives, which oversees College Now, but also Early College, College and Career Bridge for All, and other near-peer mentor programs. And I am here to share a little bit about the Financial Aid Support Team at CUNY that we launched and how we have responded to the FAFSA crisis this year. And we have some good news that really, while we're still seeing across the country that, that FAFSA's are down, at CUNY, we, for our current students, they're actually up one percent compared to last year, thank you. So for our, yes, yeah, worth an applause on that. For our current students, we have more FAFSA's than we did last year. We also have more financial aid awards packaged and sent out to students than we did last year.
New York State, public and private?
Yes, that is all New York State campuses, mhm. And this one percent is especially exciting, because when we launched the CUNY Financial Aid Support Team in April, we were down thirty-five percent year on year. We had thirty-five percent fewer FAFSA's on file at CUNY than we were expecting compared to previous years. And so I'm here to share a little bit about how we got from that thirty-five percent below to one percent above. And I wanna share a little bit just about where we sit within CUNY. The CUNY Financial Aid Support Team, or CUNY FAST, sits within DC Sargento's space here in Enrollment Management. And we've been able to really leverage the expertise of the CUNY Office of K-16 Initiatives, where we work with a lot of near-peer mentor programs, and the expertise of the financial aid team, both centrally and at campuses, to make sure that we're combining all of our assets to support students. And we launched in April with two big goals. We wanted to be sure that students knew that the FAFSA was important and that there was support out there and how they could access it. We also wanted to then build up our capacity to provide that support to students. We know that FAFSA is hard in a good year, and it was really hard last year. So we wanted a lot of capacity to support students to complete both FAFSA and the New York State TAP and Dream Act applications. So our first step was to make sure students knew about the FAFSA and knew about the supports. And we were able to launch a social media awareness campaign with one point seven five million impressions and nearly five hundred thousand views. This was a brief video that CUNY students made in talking to other CUNY students about how they could help each other through the FAFSA process and where students could go to get support from a CUNY FAST coach. We were also able to outreach to more than a hundred twenty thousand students, both CUNY current students and applicants, by email and by text. And with our texts, we were able to tailor those messages to, to really target students who did not have a FAFSA on file and say, hey, we're here to support. Go to Queensborough at their event next week, come to the central office, we've got your back, we can help you get there. And we needed to make sure we had the capacity to support students at all those events once we got the word out. And so we did a lot on this end. We were able to train more than two hundred staff and partners on how to complete FAFSA, TAP, Dream Act, the ins and outs of what was different this year, and what are best practices year on year. So we made sure that folks who were working in financial aid offices, in student affairs, federal work-study students, and CUNY K-16 mentors were able to know all the ins and outs and support students through this, through having gotten this training. We also supported campuses to host more than five hundred financial aid completion events. So we talked to campuses and said, we really need to be all hands on deck on this and not just offer overviews around financial aid or, you know, support to navigate your holds, but really support to get through your FAFSA this year. And we were able to host all these events because we added capacity.
And Laura, can I just comment? It's, I think you can tell the scale of what happened here, but it's hard to communicate how quickly this had to be lifted at this scale. I mean, it's incredible, because not only were we doing this, but this team was raising the funds in order to do it. So they were going out to philanthropy and, and to foundations at the same time. So we were building and flying all at the same time. It's just incredible what, what your team was able to do here.
We did it in about five weeks, and we had our training for our coaches in this exact room. This is where we started talking to them about it. So thank you. And I just wanna flag a couple of the ways that we were able to increase capacity. And so one was leveraging federal work-study funds. We had about fifty federal work-study application assistants that were trained and working at their campuses to support students. And we had about twenty-five CUNY K-16 FAST coaches who were able to be deployed across any campus, as well as in public events. We also provided additional funding to campuses to increase their personnel time. We knew that this meant overtime for a lot of financial aid officers and Saturday events, and so we were able to provide some additional funds for that, as well as funds for food and swag and other things to get students excited to come and get help with their FAFSA. We know that when a student is walking by and they see some food in front of a computer lab, they're gonna ask what that's about and more likely to engage in the FAFSA. We were also able to host events centrally, so in partnership with ASFA, we have virtual events. We've also partnered with Hesk and with SUNY to make sure that we can meet students wherever they're at. We also hosted events at New York Public Libraries and Queens Public Libraries and at high schools, really making sure that wherever students were, we were talking to them, we were able to help them with the FAFSA. And so all of that led to more than a hundred thousand FAFSA's completed and submitted to CUNY between April and August, which feels like a huge accomplishment, given how far behind and so we were able to get to where we are now. And we're really excited, as we look ahead, to continue to maintain this capacity to support students in completing the FAFSA, because we know that there is still a need. We hope that this coming year will have fewer glitches and more success than the last year, and yet it still is a new application. There will still be challenges, there will still be glitches, and so we know students will still need support. We also know that there might be some students who didn't enroll, and we wanna support them to enroll in CUNY in the spring through our Winter Bridge Program. We also know that this year, there is a rollout of the New York State Universal FAFSA at the, at the statewide level. And so all New York State high school students are being asked to complete the FAFSA or complete a waiver stating that they won't be completing the FAFSA before they graduate. And this is a huge lift on our school counselors and on all of our partners at high schools. And we wanna be sure we're supporting them as a partner and maintaining a really strong enrollment pipeline. So we both wanna be supporting our current students and that, that set of future students as well. And we wanna maintain this because we know that it works. We have seen that it works when we leverage our CUNY students. This work is powerful and it's really effective. We saw that students wanted to talk to other students specifically about financial aid. We weren't sure if that trust would happen, but we saw that actually students wanted to talk to each other, because they could then ask another student a question that they might have been intimidated to ask a financial aid officer, or a question as simple as like, how did you get your parents to, to send in their tax information? And being able to talk to another student through that process was much more comfortable. So we know that that is powerful. We also know that campuses really appreciated the added capacity. They have continued to ask for FAST coaches in weekly events on campuses through the summer and into the fall, and they've been able to have more events on campus, more supports for students because of this added capacity. So we know that this works, and we're really excited to look ahead to continue to provide these supports by leveraging federal work-study funds to train FAST coaches and place them at campuses in a weekly basis, running office hours, financial aid labs, and as we look into the spring, at high schools to support our high school partners. We're also gonna continue to offer our virtual supports. We know students are still showing up weekly for support to complete the FAFSA. We wanna make sure we're promoting events that campuses are hosting and that we're hosting so that students can find the support where they need it, and we'll continue to communicate to students and provide tailored messaging for students who don't have a FAFSA on file now, and then again in the spring, when they have to do it again for the next year of aid. And we'll be hosting a CUNY-wide student-centered service training to make sure that anyone who is working with students on financial aid can opt in to hear a little bit more about how to engage students in a topic that can be really vulnerable for students. So we'll be hosting this later this month. So through all these different levers, we're really excited to continue to offer the support for students. We know that financial aid is so important to enrollment and to student success. So we're really optimistic about the, the trends we've seen this year and look forward to continuing it in the future.
I have to tell you how impressive that is. It's, you know, those who doubt, and times we all do, that we can get things that we focus. You've just shown in a huge way, because I remember the dire predictions as we were in the spring about the loss of enrollment and the difficulties that we would have. So I, I can't applaud you enough, and the work that was done, everybody who was involved in this. This was, this is excellent work. It should be singled out, and we should really take note and use it as inspiration for other things in the future. So again, congratulations, this is fabulous. Not good, fabulous.
Thank you, I really appreciate that. It's been a great team effort across the enrollment management team.
Can I add to, it also, I mean, we, it went beyond enrollment management. You know, we had to get the union's agreement to do overtime and things like that. And so it really was a community-led effort and maybe an example of how we can collaborate more effectively in the future.
The idea.
And by the way, we should try and find an opportunity for the union and others and everyone who is involved to perhaps be in a room. Not everyone, but those who led, who led the charge and put this together, just to be able to say, be able to look at each other and say, hey, we did this together.
Yeah, that's a great idea.
And we got it done because of, so we really should take, take the opportunity to take a bit of a victory lap on this, particularly compared to the rest of the state.
Yeah, and what I particularly like is that our CUNY students were the ones that were employed.
Yes, absolutely.
I mean, it was just, and the, the pouring of support for students wanting to help other students.
Yeah.
I mean, it was really, it was a moment where we either were going to just collapse and fold or just pick up and go. And, you know, Laura, Andrea Suna Chan, the, the team, the Petri Foundation, the Ichigo Foundation, all just stepped up and said, if you give, if we give you the money, could you do it? And I said, yes, we can, so.
And as I said, and that the union was involved also and had to work collaboratively along with us. As I said, it's a huge team effort, so.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're gonna hear about another great program, CUNY RECONNECT. There you go.
Hi, everyone. My name is Alika Daniel, and I'm the Director of Strategy and Operations for the CUNY RECONNECT Program. And I'm here to let you know and explain a little bit more about how RECONNECT is building pipelines for our adults and our stopouts here at CUNY. RECONNECT addresses use some unique challenges faced by adult learners, including admissions barriers, academic demands, and financial constraints. We recognize that many adults face the added pressures of balancing work, childcare, and other responsibilities to contribute to high dropout rates. So in response, our initiative provides multi-dimensional support designed to help these individuals navigate complex systems, reduce institutional barriers, and access both educational and life resources. We have a dedicated team of professionals known as CUNY Navigators, both at Central Office and at the colleges, to deliver personalized counseling through multiple channels, offering tailored assistance to meet the needs of the unique learners that we have. As part of our outreach to engage adult learners across the five boroughs of New York, we launched a comprehensive marketing campaign targeting this population. Using college apps, Adult Prospect Pipeline, we employ predictive analytics to identify neighborhoods most likely to yield adult learners ready to enroll. The campaign included digital, social media, traditional media, radio, and print advertisements, as well as ads throughout New York City Transit Authority. Recognizing that access to reliable childcare was a critical need for our students, we partnered with CUNY Childcare to refresh their marketing materials, included printed brochures, a redesigned website, and a new video campaign. In collaboration with the university's Office of Career and Industry Partnerships, RECONNECT also provided training for our admissions officers, equipping them with resources to guide the adult learners towards top-in-demand career fields here in New York City. And this training focused on meta-majors, aligning adult academic programs with job market trends to help adults see clear pathways from education to employment. On Friday, we actually just held our first university summit on adult and graduate education, presented by EAB, the Education Advisory Board, to assist college stakeholders with innovative strategies for growing enrollment in the adult and graduate degree markets. For ADR twenty twenty-four, we are hoping to partner with the Institute for Justice and Opportunity based at John J. College to build out supports and eliminate barriers to successful enrollment for students and people who are impacted by the criminal legal system. Our aim is to create access to higher education pathways by assisting with the university rollout of such programs by participating colleges. To date, by the spring, RECONNECT would have had an estimated six million dollars awarded in a combination of grants to the colleges and students. Campus innovation grants to build out resources, such as the York Welcome Center and the College of Staten Island Welcome Center. We also give forgiveness grants to remove barriers and balances for prior stopouts to CUNY, and that would be about three million dollars, and then another two and a half million dollars in completion grants that actually paid towards tuition. So we aim to further strengthen our career recruitment initiatives, integrate our advanced technologies, advance our marketing reach for our students. We want to expand resources in childcare, extending availability to accommodate late nights and weekend schedules as available, recognizing that access to these services are critical and crucial for our adult learners. By building on these strategies, we aim to significantly enhance the likelihood of adults completing their degrees and supporting CUNY's broad ambition of uplifting individuals and the economy across New York City. So we are also building out with some community-based organizations to do a number of recruitment events. We've staffed all of the CUNY Citizenship Now events. We've gone to New York City high schools, working as well with New York City Board of Ed or Department of Education for their actual paras and their employers. We are also building out to the New York Public Libraries and a number of other organizations that are looking to partner with us. I'm going to share with you the targets that we've had for fiscal year twenty-three and twenty-four. Our goal was around twenty-five thousand students per year, give or take ten thousand our first year, fifteen thousand our second year. We have overachieved in those targets. To date, we have thirty-three thousand five hundred and ninety-eight students that have enrolled back in the RECONNECT program in partnership with the campuses. As of this current fall, our year-to-date numbers, I believe, are seven thousand eight hundred and forty-five students for the fall term, and spring is usually our biggest semester with students showing out. As you can see from the demographics, it breaks down that we are leading in females, Black and Hispanic populations, mainly New York City residents. We also are leading in undergraduates. A number of students have graduated since the inception of the program at five thousand six hundred and ninety-seven students. And many of the students are full-time. So over time, we're seeing that we are averaging sixteen to seventeen thousand students on average for the past two and a half years.
It's just outstanding.
Excellent.
So we're gonna highlight Lehman College, because they've been stellar in their efforts, doing so many innovative strategies. So I'll pass on to VP Finger to explain a little bit more about the campus perspective.
Sure. So since the program was initiated, we've brought back almost twenty-seven hundred students. And I can honestly say that RECONNECT really is a godsend for, for the low-income COVID-impacted students that we serve up in the Bronx. Sometimes these students need a little bit of a nudge, sometimes they need a second chance, or sometimes they just need a couple of bucks to get them back to school. And I think that's what RECONNECT has done for them. Looking at the numbers, it's nearly all undergraduate students. Seventy-one percent of them are twenty-four years of age or older, sixty-nine percent female, eighty-seven point six percent Black or Hispanic, and a little bit lower number of students in New York City. But of course, we are right on the Yonkers and Mount Vernon border, so those students are served by our campus as well. And of course, five hundred and sixty-one have graduated so far. If we talk a little bit.
Twenty-six hundred?
So, and many, many others enrolled, yeah.
Great number. That's a fabulous number.
And then which one? Okay. Oh, so back to you.
Thanks, I'll pass back to you in a minute. So our plans for the future, as I mentioned before, is that we're partnering with the Institute of Justice and Opportunity to build out this justice-impacted population by increasing university-wide enrollment and strengthening connections. Our hope is to yield and field all of the community-based organizations requesting support for these students, ushering them into the institute, so they will work as the umbrella organization at the university, supporting build-outs of such programs across the colleges. We recently had about another eight to ten schools decide that they wanted to create similar programs working with the institute's model.
Okay, so back to me. If we look at what we did during fiscal year twenty-three and twenty-four, our strategy really revolved around serving our students who stopped out, leveraging a multimodal approach. And to simplify it, we basically categorized our students into two different groups. Those students who have stopped out for less than three semesters and those students who have stopped out for longer than three semesters. What we realized for students who stopped out less than three semesters is that many of those students are often afraid to come back. There's a stigma associated with stopping out. So what we've done is changed our business processes to support those students. We no longer, we, we no longer discontinue those students. We keep them active as regular students for three semesters. We've changed our collections processes to allow them more time to set up payment plans, prior semester payment plans, and engage them in ways in which we can support them with RECONNECT dollars to bring them back. We keep them connected with their academic advisor, who still engages with them as if they're a continuing student, to encourage them to come back. And we conduct calling campaigns, where members of the community, from B&amp;G, through the accounting office, through admissions and other areas, reach out to students to let them know that we're still here and we're interested in having them come back. All of these really contribute to bringing these students back in the easiest way possible. They're ready to go, they can register for the next semester whenever registration opens, and it's been key to our success. For those students who are gone a little bit longer, it gets increasingly difficult to stay in touch with those students. So we focus primarily on engaging those students via live phone calls, text campaigns, as well as physical mail campaigns. They're invited to come back to finish what they start. But of course, we send it with a different message, knowing that some of them, same thing, the stigma associated with stopping out, we invite them to come back to our adult degree program, a program that's designed specifically for them, a program that gives them some flexibility in their gen ed courses, gives them the opportunity to self-design a major through the interdisciplinary studies program. So that way, they know that when they come back, it's not just continuing right from where they started. They have a number of different options that they can pursue. And those students are connected with an advisor in our adult degree program who specializes in the needs of adult learners. So we've taken this, this approach with these students. We also have looked at things like academic standing. If they were in good academic standing versus maybe they were dismissed from the college, to identify ways in which we could support them better, but also not send them the same generic message. Send them a message that tailors to their current situation at that moment. And we find that to be successful, too. So one case is Anthony Phillips, and this is a personal one for me, because Anthony sat in my, sat in my seminar I was teaching on a Saturday morning back in two thousand and eleven. And he was a nice guy, never thought much, any more or less than than another student. He got an A minus in my class, so I'm assuming he was a pretty good student. And like many other students, he connected with me on LinkedIn. And back in two thousand and twenty-two, I get this cryptic message, it's time for me to come back. Out of the blue, it wasn't, hey, professor, it wasn't this, it wasn't that, it was, it's time for me to come back. So I said to him, I said, okay, I said, let's take a look. And immediately, what I saw was he owed us twenty-five hundred dollars. And I said, I don't think Anthony's got twenty-five hundred dollars to pay us back. So Anthony and I connected, we had a phone call, and he starts telling me that he's sixty years old now. He had been incarcerated most of, most of his life. He was working full-time, but now it's time for him to finish his degree. It's the last thing left for him before he retires, is to finish his bachelor's degree. And really, RECONNECT allowed us to meet him dollar for dollar with funds to help him pay off his outstanding balance. He put in about half the money, we put in about half the money via RECONNECT funds, and Anthony came back and he graduated in May. And, you know, it was really great for me. I was sitting on stage, and he was all excited. We did a New York One interview about it, and it was just one of those great stories, because here's a guy that really had been written off by so many, whether it is incarceration, whether it be that he attempted, he was a good student, but, but had a couple of bad semesters along the way. And we were able to work with him and really give him some of that little bit of academics, a little bit of financial support that he needed. And we were able to work with him and really give him some of that little bit of academics, a little bit of financial support that he needed to get back into the game again. And once he did, he thrived. And he has become our biggest advocate. Um, if you're ever on the Lehman page, he comments on every post that comes out on the Lehman LinkedIn page and things like that. He shares everything and but that's Reconnect. I mean, I think that's what we're doing here in a nutshell is we're looking at a student that something forced them to stop, and we're getting them into a better position. But as we move into um, as we move into this year, really, I think one of the things that we're realizing is that it's not as easy as it used to be. So now we need to stop, start looking beyond this work that needs to continue, this mass marketing, this idea of keeping students connected with us. And we need to start to look at what we are doing wrong as an institution. And we've really done a lot of work and and taken a a look at a lot of our policies. One being our academic standing policy. So we realized something that 85% of all students who are dismissed, academically dismissed from the college, are readmitted into the next semester on part-time probation, meaning they can come back, but they can't take more than seven credits. So we said to ourselves, why are we doing this? This is the most ridiculous thing. We dropped them from their classes. And then we wait a month before we tell them they can come back, and the classes that they really want and need at that moment are no longer available to them. It was complete lunacy. And when we started to dig into this data, and lots of schools around the country had had an academic standing policy that looked just like Lehman's. So we started to dig into this policy and we said, what if we build in that extra semester with those students? We'll still put a hold on their record. We'll still require that they meet with an advisor to really structure a plan. We'll work with them to choose the courses, but we're going to give them one more semester before we move to dismiss a student. And so we worked with a committee across the across the campus comprised of faculty, administrators. Um, and we revised our policy and it went through governance. It was approved by the board. I think sometime last year and it's in effect now. And we're going to see our the second semester of this policy and the first students who are going to be dismissed will show up at the end of the fall semester. But we're going to be interesting to see how the numbers go. Sorry.
Just, what does that look like system-wide? Because this is Lehman-specific.
This is there are, there are parallel processes that are going on. We have the um, Committee on Academic Policy that's looking at many of these same things. You know, I I so loved hearing the way that you articulated it because so often the problem isn't your student, isn't our student. It is us that have created policies that weren't really created to 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 correlate to reality for most of these students.
Created so long ago.
Yeah. And so actually, I mean, this is extremely consistent with what we're doing at the system level. So some of these are on campus, some of these are system-level, but to create a coordinated approach to this at every level.
And something I'd like to add, which is very, very important, linking to the enrollment growth over time. In part because we were growing as a university prior to the pandemic uh, and really maximizing the yield of students that came directly from the here Department of Education. Uh, most of our campuses were thinking about those students. So students like this one, uh, that had some college uh, were not so. Our campuses actually brought them in, but they were not emphasized in our recruitment, in our strategy, in our outreach, right? Because we were getting all the students coming from the, that universe is change, right? And as we move forward, some some of the things that we've been discussing, for example, when we meet with the campuses for the deeper dives in the summer this year is that unless we build the muscle memory with all these changes, right? Some of them are going to be system-wide, but some of them are very tailored to the campus policies, right? We're not going to really be able to sustain enrollment growth over time because uh, there is that bulk, three-quarters of a million New Yorkers with some college, no degree. Uh, and what we're learning with Reconnect is a roadmap for all the campuses. So not only are we doing the the great human things that 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 Richard is talking about, but it is going to be indispensable that we're getting that mode
Correct.
moving forward.
Would love to see perhaps a matrix or just kind of a, what does each school do? And I think that that's, or where is each school in this, uh, 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 along this journey? Um, because this is one of those that that schools should be phrasing this carefully, but everybody should understand that we are one system.
And and to understand the consequences of taking a particular position.
It may take people to get, it may take individual colleges a little longer to get there, but everybody needs to get there. And I think that's the the point. Um, this is a great story. It just is. It's it's it, and it it serves as as inspiration, but a role model for other schools and for our system, so.
Similarly, the same subcommittee of our College Senate who recommend, who approved these changes recommended we revisit a Fresh Start program that we had on the books for a number of years. Um, we had a program there, students, that students who had stopped out for five or more years and were were applying for readmission um, could be granted the opportunity to apply for a program that would wipe away their GPA, their poor GPA if it was under a 2.0. And the committee said, well, if we're going to move forward with academic standing in this way, we should also look at this program and let every student in that position at least opt in for consideration that their situation has changed significantly to qualify for a program like this. So this won't fully be in effect until the end of the spring semester, or really for fall of '25, but we are um, we're excited about that as well. And it's timely because this is when the COVID-impacted students are hitting that five-year mark. And when we dig into those number of students who stopped out and have not returned to higher education, it's a large population that we're going to be able to target. And those those students um, really, really deserve a second chance at the, at education, given where they where they started. We also look at credit for prior learning. Um, at the college, we've taken a very unique approach for it. Towards it, we uh, use it as a student success and degree completion strategy with students who have a couple of hanging credits at the end or maybe aren't meeting New York State's liberal arts requirements for a BA degree because they did an AS degree at the community college. And we continue to do that work. Um, we see that as center to our equity work, particularly with transfer students who may lose A-eligibility. Um, we were fortunate that Cal identified us as a rising star in equity for that that work not so, not so long ago. And it's something that we're committed to as an institution to help utilize CPL, not just as a recruitment strategy, but really as a, as a student success strategy. One quick last story. Semia Rodriguez is a very interesting story. This girl has done everything right at Lehman. 3.9 GPA. She um, had to take a semester off because she accrued some debt. We brought her back this summer um, with Reconnect funds to pay for her class. She gets an A in her class, pre-med. This is a school girl who's destined for med school. She goes home to clarify an immigration issue and is not allowed back into the United States. We were able to work with this student. We gave her the Reconnect money for the, for the summer semester. But now that she's out of status, what we did was we worked with this student to identify an online program of study with the hopes she can come back. So we 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 validated, uh, we we yet, we leveraged a tuition policy that was put in place to get her into an online program so she's not paying a very high tuition level. And then we were able to utilize some external unrestricted scholarship dollars to continue her scholarship that she had when she was a Macaulay student while she works, while she, not a Macaulay student, excuse me, a Lehman scholar student, while she works through this. This girl is a genius. This is a future doctor. If we, if she can figure out a way legally to get back into the United States. Beyond that, we've connected her with an alum who works in government at her home country so that she can, we're ensuring that she's getting uh, the internet resources she needs to to complete her degree and she has a place to do her schoolwork. And at the same time, the goal of trying to make sure we support her however possible to get back to Lehman to finish that biology degree. And I will stop there if you have any other questions.
I can add one other thing that we we didn't mention here, and I'll bring the, we were just talking about this today in Academic Affairs, but one of the policies that we have implemented is to identify whether the person who stopped out has already earned a degree in an associate's, um, and to reverse, award those degrees. And through this process of reconnect, we're in the thousands at this point. Um, so it's really quite extraordinary when you think these folks not only stopped out, but they stopped out without getting the credential that they actually earned. Uh, so there's really exciting work being done on a number of our campuses. There's a few really significant leaders in that. So look forward to sharing that with you if that comes out of this work as well.
Well, I have a question for Richard. Um, how, you know, so much of this has to be driven by faculty. Um, and do you, would you like to share some of your faculty with me at Brooklyn College? No, I mean
Best comment of the day.
I mean, I I I would love to maybe have a group of, because it's as administrators, as people who are committed to these issues. We come, we talk about it, we're fired up about it, and faculty are like, you know. Maybe a group of faculty from Lehman coming to Brooklyn College and talking about this work would be academic to academic, you know?
Yeah, I I I would agree. And honestly, I I'm a longtime member of the Lehman community. I've been at Lehman for 15 years in probably six different capacities over 15 years. So I'm, thankfully, I have a lot of friends that I've made over the years. So when I suggest something, even if it sounds a little quirky or kooky to them, um, I get someone to listen to me and they'll, they'll start thinking about the work that we're doing. And then there's always a few people that are willing to pilot it. But I think it's great, too, like with our learning recovery work, with um, the work we do in in, you know, even in setting our admissions criteria, we go to the faculty every time and we ask them uh, to support this work. We ask them to lead this work in many cases. Um, we've, we're just in the process of revising our admissions criteria. We accept their analysis, not blindly, but certainly we hear them out on why they think we should change something from one way to another. And it, and it works for us. And I think it is a cultural thing. I think and part of it is, I think um, from the president on down, we have a commitment to access to social mobility and and really to academic excellence. And I think that that permeates a lot of our decisions and it actually works in our discussions when we're talking amongst ourselves.
Yep.
Um, it just happens to work at Lehman. I think a big part of that is, is the culture of the of the campus over so many years. At least, you know, I've been there 15 years.
That's great. Thank you. It's super helpful.
Richard's also, for 15 years he's been at Lehman, he's taught every semester, including as a vice president. So he's, they consider him an administrator, but also
credibility.
A member of his faculty.
Yep.
What else we have? Let me tell you, every time we went on the enrollment committee meeting, I walk away smiling. So this is, quit while we're ahead. I guess this is, that's it. There's nothing else on the agenda. Um, I move to adjourn the meeting. We are adjourned. And thank you all so much. Really inspiring, great.